So I will start our meeting of April 21st with between the Richfield City Council and our Ilhan Omar. And I just want to remind folks that we are recording and we will be putting this out for our constituents in the public to see. So, welcome, everybody. Call on folks. And if you want to please make sure that you're muting your line so we don't get the feedback, that would be great. I will just call in folks to introduce themselves so it's less confusing. And why don't we start with City Manager Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Representative Omar. We're really excited to meet with you, if it's virtually today, and appreciate your time.
Thank you. How about Councilmember Troutman, and then Wayland, and analyst Martinez-Gavinia?
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Congressmember Omar. It's good to connect with you virtually.
Hi, this is Councilmember Wayland. Morning, everyone, and glad to meet with you, Congresswoman Omar.
Good morning, everyone. Blanca Martinez-Gavinia, executive analyst. It's a pleasure to have you here with us, Councilwoman Omar.
Thank you. And if Congresswoman, you'd like to introduce yourself and then your staff, that would be great.
Yeah, can my staff go first? Who's on the call?
Hi, this is Talia from Congresswoman Omar's office.
I think that might be it.
I think Connor, my chief, and our district director Kendall will probably join. But I'm Congresswoman Ilhan Omar, and it's just such a pleasure to have this opportunity to chat with you all. Good morning to everyone. Thank you so much for taking the time. I know we would all rather be in the room having this conversation, but I'm glad we're at least, as we physically distance, we're socially connecting. It's been a priority of ours to try to make sure that we get an opportunity to have a candid conversation with the city council members, the city council members and the mayors that represent the constituents that we have. And so we're, you know, us connecting is really based on trying to hold these informal meetings because we understand that many of the priorities we lead on a federal level gets trickled down to you all, and you're the ones who are disseminating the information to our constituents and making it accessible for them. In this moment of crisis, I think it's even more important that we all work seamlessly together on a federal, state, and local level. So it's been really fun to try to have these opportunities to connect with different city council members and mayors and other representatives of our local constituents. First, I wanted to take a little bit of time to tell you guys about some of the interactions we've had with the Richfield community. Obviously, constituents are interfacing with the federal government more than ever right now, whether it is for small business loans or tax questions or immigration issues. And our office has worked really hard to try to make sure the Richfield community has the resources that it needs and that we are there for them when they need us. It was such an honor, Mayor Gonzalez, to have you at one of our first town halls as a panelist. When we talked about the racial and gender pay equity that we were working on passing and with the important conversations we had here, that bill was able to pass. And hopefully, someday soon, it'll pass the Senate and we can get pay equality for men and women in this country. Last year, we had an opportunity to visit with students and educators at Richfield High School. We've been able to help about 25 Richfield constituents with casework, whether it is trying to get them a work permit or other casework that they needed. Normally, on many of my visits with city council members and mayors, we talk about our shared priorities. But today, I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about what we've been doing in regards to the public health crisis and the economic crisis that we have. We were able to pass a package that was a robust relief that helps put funds directly into the pockets of Minnesotans. And as the regional whip for the Democratic Caucus, I've been involved in those negotiations, trying to make sure that we had the boldest package possible. I've been advocating to make sure that that package was inclusive of our undocumented communities every step of the way. And we continue to still do that. We've introduced a legislation to help make sure many of the families, 140,000 families across our state that live in mixed status, which means a member of the family has social security and the others don't, but still file their tax returns. And the package that we passed doesn't allow them to receive the direct cash assistance of the $1,200. And so we have been working to try to remedy that and make sure they're able to get the resources that they need. In the last package, we were also able to, we were also able to get our Meals Act included. As many of you know, many of our kids in our schools rely on full meals for their daily meals. And we wanted to make sure, as they were distance learning, that they would still be able to get the adequate nutrition that they need. I've recently introduced a bill to suspend rent and mortgage payment. Our state has eviction moratorium, and we've heard from so many of our constituents, many mayors, city council members, state reps, who are panicked about what happens once the emergency declaration ends and that eviction moratorium is lifted. How many people will be devastated when they are being pushed out of their homes? We know one-third of the country was unable to pay their rent on April 1st. And we expect that number will probably double on May 1st. And so we want to make sure that we're putting forth proposals that will help ensure people are able to be housed. We also learned about some of the challenges a lot of our least fortunate community members are having because things like SNAP are not able to be used in ordering food. So as we're asking people to socially distance and stay home, many of our vulnerable communities don't have, you know, the privilege of staying home. And so we want to make sure that SNAP is available to Minnesotans online and that they're able to make their food orders like everyone else might be able to. We've been working on trying to hold Amazon accountable to some of their unsafe practices because we know these are frontline workers, and we want to make sure that they are safe and the supply that is getting to people is being safely delivered. We've also been working really hard to try to make sure other relief is available to people as debt skyrocket across our state and nation. And so the last package that we passed had left some people out of that package. And all of the subsequent letters that we sent to this administration, all of the subsequent bills that we've introduced all deal with in an effort to try to remedy some of those gaps that exist. We know that the $150 billion that is supposed to go to the local and state municipalities had a definition of 50,000 residents per city. And we know there is no city in Minnesota that qualifies for that. So our delegation and our governor have been working really hard to try to make sure that in the next package, we try to change the language and the definition of what a city is so that our cities and municipalities are able to get that money directly into their accounts so that they can provide services to their constituents. We've been working really hard to try to make sure that the stay-at-home orders are being worked out and abided by residents. And in the anxiety that people have in trying to lift it, we know that we're going to have to do mass testing, 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 testing. That is what needs to happen before we can go back to life as we knew it. I know our governor, just today on the phone call, was talking about what are some of the benchmarks that need to be met in Minnesota in order for that to be lifted. And we're trying to work really hard to make sure that he has the resources from the federal government and that our region and the country as a whole continues to work together in trying to assure the lives and livelihoods are protected. With that, maybe I'll just stop and really give you all an opportunity to talk me through what are some of the things that you're hearing from, you know, the constituents that you talk to? What are some challenges that you're having as a municipality as you try to lead? And if there are ways that we can either amplify some of the things that you all are working on or if there is something that we're working on that you would like to amplify? So with that, I turn it over to you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Congresswoman. I see that Kendall and Connor are on. Would you like to briefly present yourself quick before we move into the next section of the meeting?
Jillian, I'm Director for Representative Omar. I'm here all the time. If you ever need anything, you can call me directly. And I just started in January, so I'm just getting up to speed. Talia Glass, with the city of Richfield. And, you know, we're working hard in terms of outreach on coronavirus-related issues, but all sorts of things, housing and everything. So particularly, we want to make sure folks know we're here in terms of small businesses and support from the SBA and in terms of support from DED and the expansion of unemployment. But I'll let Connor take it from there.
Yeah, hey, everyone. Connor, Chief of Staff for Congresswoman Omar. Just want to say a big thank you for hosting us today virtually. We'd rather be in person, as the Congresswoman said, but always here as a resource for anything that you need. Kendall, myself, Talia, don't hesitate to reach out to us directly. So thank you so much.
And thank you, Congresswoman Omar, and to all of your staff for all the great work you've been doing pre-COVID and all the amazing leadership you have been taking. I've been getting your newsletter updates. We've been seeing your roundtables. We appreciate your leadership on ensuring that our kids still have access to their school lunches during this time, all the work that you've been doing to protect all of our residents, including regardless of citizenship or immigration status, and really making sure that we are taking equitable approaches in this pandemic. So thank you for that leadership. So what I'll do is I'm just going to review kind of what our top priorities are, what we're seeing, what our biggest needs are. And then I ask the council members and staff to please jump in. If there's anything you want to add, I'll just kind of walk us through. And then I also want to share what we're doing at the city of Richfield locally to support our residents. So first, I'll share that a big overarching message from local municipalities, but again, specifically from Richfield, is we really need our government support to be streamlined, flexible, and adaptable, as you're seeing with the aid to municipalities or business or different communities. It's actually a lot of times not getting in the pockets and in the hands of our residents because either it's not flexible enough and it's actually not providing the support our folks actually need, or it doesn't even to us because we don't fit within those parameters that they're putting. So again, we just want to echo the message that you've already acknowledged and said, which is we need to make sure that we're covering everybody, and we appreciate your leadership in that. And in that is included small cities like Richfield and our residents. So another thing I wanted to share is, I know we sent this to you previously, some of these points previously, but as you know, the state of Minnesota, our country, and our city does not have enough PPE to address the needs of our first responders and our medical staff. So again, making sure that that's a top priority and making sure that that trickles down to our community members as well on the front lines in Richfield. We have family members that are concerned about their first responders, their firefighters, their loved ones going out and not necessarily having access to what they need. And so we're doing everything we can to protect our frontline staff, but we also need the help from the federal government in making sure that we are protecting everybody. Another area is making sure that we get the support that we need locally in our public health infrastructure and our city infrastructure to be scaling up our vaccinations. And when there is a vaccine, making sure that locally we're prepared and have the support that we need to be implementing that in a safe, quickly, quick, and appropriate way. Any other additional comments? I'm going to keep going, but I just wanted to take a pause and ask our city staff or council members if on those areas, there's anything you wanted to add. Okay. Oh, Councilmember Wayland.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I completely agree with those. And also just wanted to reiterate, I know, Congresswoman Omar, you already mentioned your work on this, but one of my constituents, I think, said it really succinctly. She told me it's hard being poor in a pandemic. And so I think the work you're doing around, I mean, even something as specific as the being able to order online with SNAP or WIC or whatever form of assistance people have, certainly on a much larger scale, the rent and mortgage assistance is really important. But anything you can do to keep helping, yes, the general public, but also specifically targeting assistance for the people most in need is just really appreciated.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. And that was on the list of the other things that I wanted to mention. So as you know, in Richfield, we have large groups of low-income residents. We have a beautiful diversity of residents here who are immigrant, refugee, vulnerable seniors. We really have residents across the board. We're very much have a lot of working families in Richfield as well. And for example, you know, just to look at the diversity of our, the school district and the city boundaries are the same. And we have 72% of our students in the public school district are students of color. And many of those students are renters. And so we do, we do get worried about the disproportionate impact on already disenfranchised community members and residents. And as Councilmember Wayland said, we really appreciate your leadership in making sure that everybody is protected and taken care of. But we are hearing from our constituents, especially folks that have already been in tough positions before this. It is so hard right now, and unfortunately, there's very little to no support for them directly. And so we are doing the best we can to pull together as a city and as a community to serve their needs. And another area that actually some of us on our city council did sign on to, and I know that you're fighting for, is around housing. We are, just like many other local officials, local elected officials, we are very concerned about what is going to happen when the rent moratorium gets lifted. We're concerned about potential mass displacements of our residents. And of course, we're also concerned about our community members who are in homes that have mortgages that are really unable to pay those mortgages. And we appreciate, again, your leadership on that. And that's something that we are working on locally, which I'll share a little bit more about later. And this is not Richfield-specific, but again, just to highlight the disproportionate impact on folks that are already disenfranchised. We saw with the closing of the Worthington Pork Plant, the JBS plant. We see how a lot of our frontline staff are not necessarily protected and disproportionately impacted. I'm hearing from residents who are childcare providers. I'm hearing from residents who work in hospitals that feel that they are at greater risk and really scared about the impact that that has on their community and their family. So I want to go into kind of what we're doing as a city and give you a flavor of what we're hearing, what we're seeing, and make sure you're aware of that. So as you know, with, as you guys are all doing, we're all working around the clock. And our city staff is also working around the clock, day and night. And it's been impressive to just see them transition into this process. And really, they've been doing an exceptional job of coming together, working as a team, and responding to this global pandemic. So I just want to give our city staff accolades for the great work that they've been doing. And we've also seen this exceptional partnership in coming together at the community level. So we see our nonprofits stepping up. We see our businesses stepping up, our neighbors stepping up, our school districts are doing, our school district and our charter schools are doing an exceptional job. We are just really proud of how Richfield has been leading in this and leading to come together. So one of the, a couple of things that we've been focusing on as a city is, one, making sure that we, our residents know we're still open for business. We are continuing to provide quality services to all of our residents and making sure that we're keeping them safe and our staff and our whole community safe in the process. So we want our residents to know through communication and through our services that we're providing. We are here for you in the middle of, your local government is here and you can depend on us. So we want to make sure that we're doing that great work, which we have been doing, and then communicating that to our residents. We're making it a priority to keep people informed in multiple languages about what is going on with COVID. We're giving updates that are national, statewide, and also making sure people know what opportunities and resources they have to access to here locally. We're doing things like making sure we're doing one-on-one communication with our most vulnerable folks through our police department and some of our other staff. We're doing citywide mailers. We're doing a community survey. So we're really trying to find many different ways to make sure we're personally connecting with our residents and making sure that we're addressing barriers that people may have in communication through that process. And then lastly, one of the things that we're doing is preparing our community, preparing our council, and preparing our staff to start really looking at budget implications. This is more for staff and for council, but this is going to have huge impacts, possibly for generations, likely for generations, on our residents. And we're starting to move from emergency response planning and action, which we'll continue to do, but also going to that mid-to-long-term budgeting and financial planning and trying to figure out how are we going to prepare for the future? What is it going to look like on the other end of the pandemic? And how do we need, what kind of tough decisions do we need to make as a city to make sure that we are as resilient as possible as a community coming out of this the other end? And that unfortunately is going to be through really hard discussions and decisions, knowing there's a lot of things that are out of our hands. And again, that's where that local and federal partnership is so important because we need your support, continued support, and helping us so that we can make those tough decisions locally and make sure that we're putting our residents in the best situation possible coming out of this. Some examples of what we've been doing. Another kind of overlaying thing that we've been working on is we've been talking to folks, other cities, organizations, elected officials, to figure out what are the gaps that need to be filled that are not being filled at the federal level and that are not being filled at the state level. And the city is stepping up to try to fill those gaps locally. So for example, last night, we actually just passed funding for increased emergency rent assistance, regardless of documentation status for our Richfield residents because we did see that that was a need and a gap that needed to be filled. Of course, the gap is much bigger than we have resources for, but we are really doing the best that we can. Another example is we talked to several small businesses locally in Richfield, but then we also talked to organizations serving small businesses. And we asked, what are the gaps in getting funding to you? How could the city help support and fill those gaps? So we also passed a small business assistance fund as well to try to help fill those gaps. So that's very much a big picture, what we're doing as a city. Some of the things that we're seeing, and I just want to open this up to other council members and staff. Obviously, there's a lot of need for mental health support, and the infrastructure wasn't there before this, and it is not there now. And it's being inundated. And we see a lot of residents that feel isolated, that are struggling with mental health, anxiety, depression. And that level of fear is exacerbating. And we don't really hear too much about what's going on around supporting our mental health providers. So that's one area that I wanted to lift up. But I'll take a pause and ask other council members and staff, based on what I said around what we're doing, what the needs and priorities are. Is there anything folks want to add? Nope, looks like we're good to go. So Congresswoman Omar and staff, and your staff, do you guys have any additional questions? Is that pretty common in terms of what you're hearing from other communities? Anything you'd like to comment on?
Congresswoman, happy to chime in with a few updates and responses to the items raised.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can now. Yes.
Oh, okay. Yeah, go ahead, Connor.
Okay, so just wanted to run through a few of these things and give you an update on what's happening right now as we speak. So right now, there is, seems to be very close to a deal on what they're calling an interim package. And this is going to come to the House floor as soon as tomorrow. And, you know, generally, people are good with what's in it, but mostly upset about what's not included. Right now, they have about $100 billion for testing and hospitals. And they have funds to replenish and the Small Business Administration, well, it's the Paycheck Protection. And that's mostly what this encompasses. Main fighting point for us and something we identified early on was the lack of local government support. They had defined a city as a municipality with 500,000 or more people. We all know not a single city in the state of Minnesota would qualify for funds under that definition. So we led, we've been working closely with the Minnesota delegation as well as the National League of Cities to send letters to our leadership as well as to Secretary Mnuchin at Treasury to make sure that local cities and smaller cities are able to make sure that local cities and smaller cities are able to access the funds that are being granted. It's not included in this interim package. It's one of the main points of consternation around it. And something that we're kind of grappling with as we kind of determine our support for it. But that's kind of been a major sticking point for us, because as you mentioned, Mayor, I think, you know, the city budget implications, not to mention, you know, we know 30% of renters didn't pay their rent on April 1st, and that number's likely to increase in the next month. And cities depend largely on those property taxes. And so we're looking at a major problem with our housing market if something isn't done immediately. Which is why we've introduced our mortgage cancellation, which would allow the federal government to help pay those rents and mortgages on behalf of renters and landlords. So those are a couple of major things that are moving right now. As far as frontline workers, we're also in the works on a developing hazard pay for all of those frontline workers. I think you're seeing and hearing a lot about nurses and doctors coming in, traveling from other states who are receiving hazard pay, but our own nurses and doctors aren't getting that pay. So that's another thing that we're looking at very closely. In terms of PPE, we are in constant communication with the governor's office and the Hospitals Association to make sure that, one, it's the most cases, making sure we're prioritizing our most vulnerable communities. So I think those are a few of the things. Lastly, the small business assistance, those, you know, the oversight on these things was obviously done poorly where, you know, bigger corporations were favored. I mean, you saw people like Shake Shack getting getting $25 million, Potbelly, another one. So making sure that these additional funds, great, you know, refill those coffers. But make sure this is going to like the mom and pops and small businesses who really need this help. And you saw Shake Shack come back and they're getting that back. And so we're pushing the others to do that as well. We're just pushing for those types of assurances on this interim package. And while they're not doing local government support on this round, they are telling us that they're going to address that in a a fourth package, but you know, that's kicked down the road a little bit. So we're really pushing hard right now to do these things now while we can. But that's kind of an update on a few of the things you had mentioned there, Mayor. And I'll turn it over to the Congresswoman if she has anything to add.
Yeah, I will add that for PPE, the Defense Protection Act was something that we focused on at the beginning of this pandemic. Many of us in Congress led a letter to the administration asking them to invoke it. The president did invoke it, but the urgency in trying to utilize it for its potential has